This time I'll call the December meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. Board members, would you please rise for our invocation? Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together to make the decisions for our school system. While we thank you especially for this holiday season that we can celebrate the meaning of Christmas. While we ask that you guide us and direct us in all of our decisions, while we ask that you be with us as we make the decisions that affect not only our staff but especially our children, while we ask that you give us wisdom and guidance throughout this meeting. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen. Now join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Mr. Jimmy Rogers will not be here to sit in due to the fact that he's had some surgery recently and he's recovering, but he is in a lot of pain tonight. He was at one time planning on using our policy where you can call in electronically and still participate in the board meeting, but tonight he wasn't feeling that well. So he called in earlier this evening and said he would not be with us here or electronically. So we wish him well and we hope he gets to feeling better. Our next regular board meeting will be here January the 8th at the Education Center at seven o'clock. And board members, if you've not attended a School Board 101 session in Raleigh, I would strongly urge you to consider School Board 101, January 18th through the 19th. It's an excellent program to help you be a better board member throughout. And it's put on by the North Carolina School Board Association. I would strongly urge you to attend if you can. Any other announcements that we need to make? Okay. Under agenda adjustments to this afternoon or this evening, first of all, we'd like to... Is Ginny going to do the 2017 card? We've got some special guests with us tonight and some special recognition, and I'll call them Ms. Ginny Valliere.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte, it is my pleasure to recognize the 2017 Christmas card winner, Margaret Alsbrink. She's in the fifth grade at June Luska in Ms. Mullins' class, and her art teacher is Ms. Buchanan. And they're all here and her, I think her dad, they're all here to support her tonight. She's going to receive the framed print, 25 Christmas cards, and a hundred dollar check. So we are very excited and happy for her, and congratulations.
That's the money, just leave it there. Also, under agenda adjustments, we would like to add Belinda Trantham has a short presentation about Title IV, is my understanding.
Chairman Francis, member of this board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte, I would like to present the Title IV. This is a new federal program this year that we were given some money for, so I just want to explain what Title IV is and where we're going to use the money that we received. With any federal money, there are strict guidelines to it, and we have to... If we received over thirty thousand dollars, we had to address each of the three areas and had to put at least twenty percent into each of the three areas. So what is Title IV? It is part of the Every Child Succeeds Act, and it is meant to provide students with well-rounded education, a safe and healthy school, and then the use of technology to improve academic achievement and digital literacy for students. So we had to put at least twenty percent in each of those three areas. So we are going to, for our well-rounded educational opportunities, we're going to partner with our Science House, which is through NC State, to have a robotics camp targeting our third through fifth graders and sixth through eighth graders. And this is so that we can increase our awareness at an early age for the STEM and environmental concerns, to create a career interest. As you well know, we need those kind of students, so we want to get them interested in science, technology, engineering, and math. And we also want to target our females and minorities and enhance their awareness so that hopefully when they get out of school, they'll want to go into those fields. For our safe and healthy students, as you are well aware of, we have a severe drug problem in Haywood County, and that was on the news actually this week about a huge drug bust. We do a really good job right now at targeting our fifth, our eighth, and our ninth graders, but we feel like now we need to target our seniors for drug addiction and suicide. Many adults, after they get out, get addicted and also commit suicide. So our outcome here is going to be to decrease adult suicides and hopefully decrease the drug addiction and overdose in Haywood County by targeting our seniors. And then effective use of technology. This is not to purchase technology, but to train our teachers in how to use this technology so that our students are using technology more and are ready for the technology fields and skills that they need to be good in the workforce and be successful. So we're going to contract with experts to train our teachers in grades K-12 in effective use of technology. There's lots of technology out here, and our schools have a lot of technology, but we want our teachers to be better at it and use it more in their classroom and integrate it more. So, and we're going to tailor that to K-5, our 6, 8, and then our 9, 12, because each of those grade level spans are different and their needs are different. And so that, we want to enhance the learning opportunities of our students, enhance teacher skills in technology and using technology in the classroom, and then students using more technology in the classroom. So our budget is, we didn't get a whole lot of money, but we got some. This is a 27-month grant, and everything has to be encumbered by September 30th of 2019, and it all has to be liquidated by December 31st of 2019. We can adjust our plan as we go, we can adjust the money as we go, we just have to make sure we stay spending the twenty percent in each of those categories. So Haywood County received forty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars, and we possibly may get some more money because the deadline for submitting this was in November... Sorry, December, December 1st, and we didn't get it till after Thanksgiving. So had a short turnaround, and there was a lot of paperwork and a lot of things that had to be turned in. So some of the schools won't go for that money, especially if there's a lot of work with it. And so whatever counties in the state of North Carolina didn't participate, their money will be divvied out among the ones that are. So there's a possibility we'll get some more money hopefully to add to that.
That'd be great.
So we allocated twenty thousand for our well-rounded educational opportunities. We felt like that's going to be the largest area that we're going to have to spend the most money for, the STEM. Ten thousand for our safe and healthy students. We already have our Drugs in the Mist that is nonprofit, and they've already been in contact. We've already had one meeting about what we can do to meet with our seniors and work with them. And then seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars, we have allocated to our effective use of technology because we felt like that was the second largest area there for getting people to train and doing some summer training and those kind of things. Any questions? Thank you.
Just to call me, congratulations on the grant.
Thank you. It was approved by the state, so...
Excellent.
Thank you.
That's a lot of work. I know those grants are a lot of work, and thank you so much for your going after the grant monies, and hopefully some of the folks that didn't participate will get that extra money and put it to good use. Thank you. Also, under agenda adjustments, we have one item from finance that needs to be taken care of, and I think Building and Grounds has several items. I was in the Building and Grounds, I know we added a bunch. And then we also have one item that needs to be added, and we'll go ahead, if you'd like, Alicia, Ms. Glantz will do a presentation for the approval of her Business Advisory Council. I noticed there's a little bit of a change this year in that, so...
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, I am coming to you tonight to get approval for our Business Advisory Council. General Assembly in the spring passed, or mandated us to have a Business Advisory Council. We had actually already been doing a Workforce Development Committee of everybody listed on my list except for the principal. And so I have talked to our Western Region Director and our state people to make sure that I could, was legal to ask for it, but they wanted us to combine, let that Advisory Council be our CTE Advisory Council. And so every member that has been listed has agreed to be on the board.
Agreed.
And so tonight I'm asking for it to be approved.
Looks like you've got a nice cross-section of the community represented on your board, and also I noticed that they fall into the categories that was mandated by the state statute.
It worked out perfect.
That's good. That's good that they gave you that latitude also. This time we entertain a motion that we approve the board as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Barrett's made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bobby Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Glantz.
Thank you.
Are there any other agenda adjustments we need to do tonight? Ms. King, has anyone signed up to address the board in open session? Thank you. Board members, you've had an opportunity to read and look at the November 9th closing regular session minutes. At this time, we entertain a motion that they be approved as presented. Mr. Rogers? Bobby Rogers made the motion, seconded by Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Board members, we earlier tonight interviewed two candidates for the Beaver Dam District seat appointment. At this time, I'll entertain the motion, if any, to take action on the Beaver Dam seat vacancy.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to put in form of a motion that we accept David Burnett.
Okay, we have a motion to accept David Burnett as our Beaver Dam candidate, or board member. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
I would like to say that both candidates were great.
Very qualified.
Very qualified.
I agree. Very, very much so. Any other comments, questions? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Garrett, if you would, would you please inform both candidates of the results of tonight's actions by the board? And also, with that objection, I'd say we need to swear amen at our next regular board meeting and get in touch with the Board of Elections or whoever we need to know about our selection so we can make it legal and official. Congratulations to both candidates who are very qualified and did an excellent job on their interviews. On our agenda now, we have a real busy, looks like, Mark Shepherd. Looks like a whole lot of policies getting ready to come to us.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Yeah, there are quite a few in the file update list that were sent to us from the School Board Association, and a couple of them we purged out. One in particular was 2400 was going to change to include some language about restart schools, and those are basically a situation where schools have really, really underperformed over a period of time, and the state has just come in and shut those places down. And we were encouraged that if we did not, you know, foresee that happening in the near future in our system to not even, you know, move that policy at all from what it has in it now. And thank goodness, we're in a position where we really do not foresee that. We feel like a lot of school systems would love to have our lowest performance school in their school system, so we won't be touching that one at all.
Very good.
If you have any questions on any of those, I'll do my best to answer them.
There's a lot of them.
I would like to make a note too that Set 1 are the ones that have any kind of substantive change, and most of those aren't huge changes. The second set is strictly technical changes in the footnotes pertaining to State Board of Education policy changes and that kind of stuff, just updating the footnotes.
As the policy committee started working or looked at these and pretty well feel... So they'll be tabled again, of course, for 30 days for public input, so all the listed, I'm not going to read them all, all the listed policies will be tabled until the next regular board meeting, and the public is welcome to look at these on our website. They'll be posted up. So if there are any comments that the public needs to make on these, please feel free to contact any board member or all board members. They'll be tabled.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you, sir.
That's a lot of work. Before we do finance, we'll call on the Building and Grounds. I think the acting chair tonight is Mr. Stephen Kirkpatrick, and I know the meeting was very busy but very productive and went really well.
Yes. Yes, Building and Grounds has a couple of motions, like seven, that needs to come before the board, and I'm going to put this one, all of them's going to be in form of a motion.
Okay, we got you.
The first one's going to be move forward with Central Haywood High School flooring over here at the old gym. We don't go ahead and move forward with the bidding process, and we don't go with the maple flooring and the synthetic alternate flooring, and they don't be a couple other renovations inside the gymnasium that's going to go along with the bids. It's going to be with bleachers, heaters, the heater, and then the concession stand, and then they'll be painting. We don't go ahead and put that out to bid, and that's the first motion I'm going to make.
We have a motion from Building and Grounds, Mr. Kirkpatrick, what he said.
Yeah.
I'm not going to repeat it. Do I hear a motion?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Francis. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, now the second motion, or the second thing on the agenda, which is going to be in form of a motion, to go ahead and proceed with obtaining money from tax revenue funds for the Central Haywood High School renovations. We've given Joe, Joe's going to go to the county commissioners to get that money from the tax revenue.
Okay. We have a motion from Building and Grounds, as stated, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bobby Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Is this our money, or is this...
Yes.
...question additional money?
No, this is our money that the county likes to hold for us in the form of tax...
Sales tax revenue.
Yeah, sales tax revenue, they like to hold it for us.
Forty-one or forty-two funds? I can't remember.
Yeah. Okay.
That'll pay for the project.
Joe's going to go over there, he's going to ask for enough money to cover for the
Any other question or discussion? It'll ultimately come back to the board for final approval.
Yeah, for final approval.
The bid.
Whenever we get the...
This is just giving authority to do.
To go get the money.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Good, good question. Real good question.
There being no other comments, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, the third thing that I'm bringing in the form of a motion, too, is to proceed with the bidding of the replacement of the Bethel Middle Gym Boiler with a package of heat and air conditioning.
Okay, we have a motion, as stated, from Building and Grounds, Mr. Stephen Kirkpatrick. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next thing, I'm going to be bringing to you in the form of a motion is to proceed with approval to secure the lottery funds to pay for the Bethel Middle Gym Heat Replacement.
Okay. We have a motion from the Building and Grounds Committee, Stephen Kirkpatrick, as stated.
As stated, yeah.
Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bobby Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
So this is money that's going to be coming out of our lottery funds?
Yeah, and this is another situation where we're giving Joe the authority to go and ask the county commissioners for our money.
Money, okay. How old is the current system there?
Old, old.
It's... It's original. Okay, that's said.
It's long overdue.
And right now, it's to replace that boiler system because the steam pipes are leaking in terms...
Under...
So we're going to lose the floor for it if we...
Right. Yeah, okay.
All right, any other questions or discussion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, one more thing, well, three more. In the form of a motion, proceed with signing a five-year contract with Duke Energy to upgrade the parking lot lights with LED lights pending legal approval by Pat's matters.
Okay, we have a motion from Building and Grounds from Mr. Kirkpatrick, as stated. Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Now, is this going to be something where we're going to work out cost benefit with them? How does that, how's this going to...
We will save approximately thirty dollars a month.
Okay.
And this is all the parking lot lights that Duke has in our campus. So the savings are not substantial, but there is saving.
Okay, do we have to pay for this upfront, or is that...
It's monthly. That's for the extended contract penalty.
Okay, got you.
It's basically a rent to own, lease to own, five-year, and we'll have new lights and better lights and cheaper lights. Okay, now we need to vote, I assume, unless there's any more comments.
Thirty dollars a whole or thirty dollars?
Per month.
Parking lot?
A whole.
A whole per month.
Okay.
It's the way it was described. Okay, still a saver. Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Carry on.
All right, the purchase, this is in form of a motion, purchase of a F-350 utility truck with snowplow not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion, as stated, from Mr. Kirkpatrick from Building and Grounds. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
What other uses do we have? Is this going to be just for plowing, or is this going to be multi-use?
This will be an everyday use vehicle for the utility for your maintenance.
And it's going to have a plow attachment?
Yes, it will be attached.
And the other snow truck that they have been using, went down about two months ago, and it's, they've been patching it and fixing it like we do with everything when we need to. And it's got to the point now that the patching and fixing is done. It's going to cost too much, it's worthless.
Patching and fixing a 1988...
Eight.
1988 vehicle to be replaced with a newer version. Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more. The surplus of a 1988 F-700 green dump truck. We're getting rid of it now.
We have a motion, as stated, by Mr. Kirkpatrick from Building and Grounds, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Francis. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Is that going on that guy's deal?
Just wondering.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'm done, thank you.
Mr. Kirkpatrick, we appreciate the hard work of the Building and Grounds Committee tonight and appreciate you filling in for Mr. Rogers. You did an admirable job.
Thank you.
Enough said. You did a good job. I'm proud of you. All right, next on our agenda, we had one item that we needed to add from Building, I mean, from Finance Committee plus the regular monthly, so I'll call Mr. Hinson at this time to give us the monthly financial reports.
At this time, I'll put in form of a motion that we approve the regular monthly financial reports. Everything looked really good.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Hinson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Clark. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next is a motion to approve the purchase of a new activity bus, cost of ninety thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. And the money's there.
Okay.
God has the money.
Okay, we have a motion from the Finance Committee to purchase a activity bus, as stated, and do I hear a second to the motion? Okay, Ms. Barrett, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Ms. Barrett, seconded the motion. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Similar situation where we're having to replace a very old...
An eighty-two, did you say?
Ninety-two. Ninety-two, so...
So the old...
We've gotten the use out of these vehicles.
The old, old bus you put now on Gov. Deal?
I don't know, we'll have to talk to Mr. Patrick.
Yes.
The way it's going on Gov. Deal?
We'll try.
That's what he said.
So is this going to be an activity bus for... I know activity buses are sort of set somewheres, but where is this one going to be sitting at?
More than likely, it'll go to Bethel Middle School.
Okay.
That's the next one.
So 1992, how many miles that thing is?
I'm not sure. Two hundred plus probably.
Two hundred thousand miles plus.
And where did you say you was getting the money? You've got it in your budget, and this is... And this is the best?
This is revenue, this is revenue from activity bus fees that we have, that's how we, that's how we provide the replacement.
Like when kids take a trip, field trip.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's all from Finance.
All from Finance. Do we need to take any action on the audit report?
Probably, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
No, none action, no action. It is what it is.
But you're welcome to, but it's going to go.
But it's... I would just like to state that it was an excellent audit report, and I wanted to thank our Finance Department and our administration for doing an excellent job. It looks like our system is well-managed financially, and we heard that from our audit report tonight earlier. And congratulations, Ms. Angie, on an excellent report, and congratulate your staff and all, too, okay?
I want to say that I think it's been a system-wide effort, because it was several areas that have actually, you know, come, they were losing revenues for several years, and a lot of them have now started gaining back some of the revenues they lost, so I think it's, I just want to congratulate everybody, system-wide, for their hard work.
Good job, congratulations. All right, next on our agenda is Dr. Garrett with our personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, you have eight separation from employments, you have two employee status changes, nine leave of absences. For your approval, you have eleven employments, twenty-nine employee status changes, one leave of absence, three contracted services, six substitutes, two employee coaches, four volunteer services, and a hundred and eighty bus driver hours.
At this time, we entertain a motion that they be approved as presented. Mr. Rogers has made the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Francis, I believe you beat her just by a tad, I might be wrong. Anyway, we have a motion and a second to approve the personnel as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Garrett. The board will not adjourn the meeting at this time, we will recess back to closed session, and we will come back out at a later time and adjourn the meeting. Okay, I'm going to call us back to order, there being no further business to come for the board tonight, meeting adjourned.